We're hot, alright. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 7 o'clock. Today is Monday, August 19th, 2019. This is the regular City Council meeting for the City of Tugak, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then in a moment of silence, if you'll please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, let's get started. It's a good, good evening. It's gonna rain a little bit, I think, later on, but we can get through this before all that happens. Let's start with a special presentation by our Chief of Police, Officer Chief, Chief Steve Parker. Officer Chief, oh, and Kevin Tolson from the York County Sheriff's Department. Yeah, you can borrow mine if you need.
First, I want to thank Council, Mayor, and Management for the continuous support and appreciation for the police department.
Is it on?
Is it?
Can anybody hear okay?
Is that better?
There you go.
Okay. I want to thank Council, Mayor, and Management for their continuous support and appreciation for the Tugak Police and its entire staff. This past month hasn't been the easiest of month, but during recent misunderstandings with people who only had half the story, our council was placed in very difficult situations, but never once showed a lack of support for police, and I wanted to make sure that I put that out there, 'cause I know there was other stories. So I thank you for the support that you give. Saying that, I wanted to acknowledge the reason I'm here tonight is one of the prouder moments in my career, when I get to recognizing an officer for a job well done, and Sheriff Tolson is here with me, standing unified about this person. I'm not sure if the community knows this, but we belong to the York County Multi-Jurisdictional Drug Task Force. We also belong to the York County Multi-Jurisdictional SWAT Team, along with every other agency in York County. This helps us better prepare for response if we ever have a crisis in our area, such as a bomb threat call at Glenon Center, or barricaded man with a gun the year before, or even when officers were shot at in Tugak numerous years ago. The SWAT Team is one of the most important units we belong to, to make sure that we are cohesively working together and know what to expect from each other during and if a crisis hits. The SWAT Team is like insurance, that you hope you never need, but if, but you better have it when you need it. This Sergeant I'm recognizing today has exemplified what it means to put others before himself, a true servant heart. He runs towards gunfire, not away. He's a past Purple Heart recipient. Sergeant Justin Spencer, please come forward.
Over the past two years, he's shown time and time again, he's willing to sacrifice for others and deal with difficult situations. He solved an infant homicide which resulted in the mother pleading guilty from his investigation, which was so good, there was no long-drawn-out court battle. He was present on the night Mike Doty was murdered, and held the suspect at gunpoint with other officers until Officer Grayson from Rock Hill was able to crawl under the deck and retrieve the suspect who shot four officers. The reason we're here tonight is for Justin Spencer's most recent encounter. We're here to give him a Medal of Valor, a very rare and prestigious award, one that I've never given out. Please bear with me, this recognition deserves the time I'm giving it. First, let me tell you what the Medal of Valor stands for, then why he is receiving it. The Medal of Valor is an award for bravery, given for individuals' acts of extraordinary bravery or heroism performed in line of duty at extreme, life-threatening, personal risk. It recognizes officers who actions could be considered as having gone above and beyond a call of duty, or to recognize an officer who has performed the act of bravery, displaying an extreme amount of courage while knowingly facing imminent danger. The reason why we're here, on June 8th of this year, officers were dispatched to an area in Rock Hill in reference to a shooting where two people had been shot and killed in a vehicle. Once officers were on the scene, the K-9 unit was requested since it had not been determined how the unknown suspect had left the scene. As it is protocol, when the K-9 is requested to track someone who is armed and dangerous, they requested SWAT to assist with providing security during the tracking of the subject. Sergeant Justin Spencer and Sergeant Grady Gonzalez were the first two members to respond to the request and went to the scene to meet with K-9. The K-9 unit conducted a sweep of the area, but were unable to locate the track. Other officers canvassed the neighborhood and developed a potential suspect. Shortly thereafter, another radio call came in that a home had been burglarized and someone else was shot at. The person had fled in a vehicle. Multiple officers on the murder scene left in attempt to locate that suspect. Sergeant Spencer and Sergeant Gonzalez got into the bed of Deputy Moore's unmarked truck. Deputy Threet and Moore rode in the front. The suspect's vehicle was spotted on Church Road by Corporal Kenzie, who then followed the suspect. As Lieutenant Clevenger caught up with Kenzie in the suspect vehicle, the suspect pulled into the driveway and stopped. After briefly complying with Lieutenant Clevenger's commands, the suspect suddenly grabbed the rifle and began firing at Lieutenant Clevenger. Lieutenant Clevenger returned fire, striking the suspect's vehicle numerous times as the suspect pulled back through the yard. Corporal Kenzie also fired at the suspect vehicle as it pulled out through the yard. At that point, several police vehicles, including the truck with Sergeant Spencer, were in the area headed towards Clevenger and Kenzie to assist them. As these officers were responding to the scene, they passed the suspect as he headed in the opposite direction. As the suspect passed these officers, he fired several rounds at them. These officers turned their vehicles around and pursued the vehicle. The suspect was blocked in, got out of the vehicle, appeared to briefly comply before running on foot. Several officers chased after the suspect as Sergeant Spencer and Gonzalez got back into the truck, realizing they needed to cut the chase off. They pulled into a driveway a short distance away and observed the suspect emerge from the wood line. After a brief foot chase, the suspect was taken into custody by Sergeant Spencer and Gonzalez as other officers arrived. They observed the suspect had sustained gunshot wounds and summoned medics to render aid. As Sergeant Spencer's statement read, he then had to check his own self for gunshot wounds, not sure from the adrenaline if he had been hit. Sergeant Spencer, job well done. Tugak is proud of you. Please accept this Medal of Valor for courage and bravery. I can't say how much I am proud of you.
Sheriff's gonna speak a minute, and then I'd ask for his family to come up and get pictures real quick, if that's okay.
I'll be very brief. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, Council. I'm proud of Justin. He's been with our team on a couple of these occasions that are very dangerous. Tugak is coined, if not the safest city, but one of the safest cities in the country, and it's because of officers like Justin, sergeants like Justin, and it's important. He will never say it. I think he appreciates it. Every officer appreciates recognition when they get it. Lord knows, we sure recognize them when they don't do so well, so it's important to recognize them when they do do well, and I'm proud to have you, as we consider you one of our own at the office. Justin, we see you probably more than this guy does, I don't know. Well, we already got him. I'm proud of, I'm proud of that partnership with the Drug Enforcement Unit and the SWAT Teams. I'm proud of my relationship that I have professionally with my colleague here, Chief Parker, and our friendship also. So, thank y'all, and again, Justin, congratulations, well deserved, sir. Yes, sir.
Like Chief said, we do appreciate our police very much. We try to take good care of them, and evidenced by that great house we just built for them, brand-new, state-of-the-art house. And I can see Officer Gordon back there, he's also on our color guard sometime. Whenever we do, whenever we march to the color guard, veterans, we always make sure we have a police officer in our color guard to recognize the service they perform to our city. They either carry the flag, the Tugak flag, or they're in the color guard in some way. So appreciate you guys in blue, couldn't be this place without you. It really is a great honor for you guys, appreciate everything you do. Now get back to work. Alright, item number two, public hearing with the Planning Commission. We're gonna discuss rezoning of plus or minus .8 acres identified as TMS number 646-000003 from RUD in the county to PDD in the city, which is a lot in Windhaven, and we also have a discussion about the budget. So with that, Chris Leonard, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, we'll have an introduction by Susan Brett to discuss the rezoning, and then any Council questions or comments, and then any Commissioner questions or comments, and then any public comment that anyone would like to make.
Thank you. I think I need a ladder to get this down. Hi. The applicants, the current developer and the builder of the residential portion of the Windhaven Plan Development District that was approved by Council April 18th, 2016. The preliminary plat for this residential development was approved by the Planning Commission on May 7th, 2018. The street that is being, for the property is being proposed, we asked that this street be included in the preliminary plat, for you could have the connection to an extension of Zimmerman Drive. The addition of this subdivided portion of the tax map number, as stated, to the PD is necessary to permit the connection of Thicket Crossing Road to Zimmerman Drive. This property was not initially a part of the PDD, however, as I said, we've had it reflected on the preliminary plat at the request of staff and the Planning Commission. The reasoning for this was to improve the internal connection and traffic flow by completing the connection to Zimmerman Drive and preventing Thicket Crossing from being constructed as a dead-end street. And the developer, then, we asked him to seek purchase of this required portion of the parcel, and then include it as an addition to the PDD, and that's what is before you today. Glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Susan. Council, any questions, comments? Commissioners, any questions or comments for Susan? Then we'll open it up for any public comment or questions. There being none, we will close the public hearing.
You can discuss budgets at all?
At this time, the Planning Commission is adjourned.
Are you gonna discuss budgets at all? It's on here that you're discussing budgets? That's, okay, you're just doing, okay, great. We'll wait for you to come back with your recommendation, I guess? Okay. Alright, we will move to, since there's no public comments, we will move to item four, approval of minutes. Council, you've seen the minutes. Do you have any additions, deletions, or changes?
We've gotta do the public hearing on the budgets.
Oh, sorry? Go ahead.
You have to do the public hearing on the budgets. Item B, 2B?
Planning Commission.
That's the Planning Commission doing that?
No, Sir. The Planning Commission's only doing the rezoning.
Alright, item two, item 2B, the public hearing on fiscal year 2019-2020 budgets. Charlie Funderburke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of Council. Tonight is the required public hearing for the 2019-2020 fiscal year budgets. To begin with, as shown on the screen, as we, as staff develop the budgets, keeping in mind the strategic goals from City Council, those three main tenets were investment and reinvestment into facilities and infrastructure, city services, promoting and branding the city, our customers, and our staff, internal and external customer relationships across all departments, and continuing to develop and invest in that small-town feel, primarily with volunteerism, our events and programs, strong neighborhoods, and access to city leadership and information. With that in mind, we'll start with our full-time employees. The only increase across any of the departments on full-time employees are for dispatchers in our police department. All other departments will stay as they are for this current fiscal year. Just to show you a brief kind of history dating back to 2016 through our current fiscal year, you can see that most departments are holding pretty tight as far as the, as far as their full-time employees go. With your increases, really primarily just showing in public safety, and primarily Fire Department until this year, and now in your law enforcement. Our revenues broken into five main categories. Your taxes, which includes your real estate and your personal property, cars, boats, things of that nature, projected at $6,69,974 for the year. That is a approximate 7.6% increase from our current fiscal year. License fines and fees at $3,095, $95,298. That's an approximate 4.9% increase. Our state shared revenue, or local government fund, if you will, we've been told by the state, is at $180,651, which is a approximate 4.7% increase. Recreation, which includes funding from the county as well as our recreation programs, sponsorships for those programs, park rentals and the like, is projected at $461,041, or a 3.4% increase. And then other revenues coming in at $996,802, which is a 16.2% increase. That's where your, the rental of the, or the lease payments for the cell tower property just outside of this building, garbage collection fees, things of that nature, are within that other category. So your total general fund revenues are anticipated at $10,803,766, which is a 7.4% increase over the current fiscal year's budget. Just to kind of look at the trend on those revenue line items, you can see, or those revenue categories, you can see that the tax revenues has had a steady climb since 2016. That's not due to millage increases, but just increases in the actual tax base here in Tugak, both residential and here recently, some commercial. Your license fines and fees, it's our, it's our second-largest revenue category, and you can see, it's remained pretty consistent over the last few years. Not a whole lot of peaks and valleys as you look at that. State shared revenue is about as flat a line as it gets. That one has not increased very much over the last several years. Your recreation revenue, again, has been pretty consistent, and your biggest jump is in your other categories, and again, that's due with bringing on the, begin to charge for the trash collection, is why you see that jump from 18 to 19. As we look at the expenditures per department within the general fund, the council budget at $36,591, it's 13.3% increase. Really, your only change is there due to the election expense in November, as well as a modest increase for training purposes for council. Your court, municipal court budget at $280,363, that is a three points, a projected 3.7% increase. Administration department at $767,360. It's actually a slight decrease of just over $6,000 from the current year. Development services at $587,791, that's an approximate 9% increase. Public works at $951,541, it's an approximate 6.9% increase. Law enforcement at $2904,632, that is a, right at a 4.2% increase. Your fire services at $211,882, which is just over, almost 13% increase over the current year. Parks and Recreation at $685,997, approximate 3.3% increase, and your non-departmental at $2577,609, which is an approximate 3.9% increase, again, giving you a balanced budget of $10,803,766. Just to run through these departments real quick, show you, on each of these screens, you'll see, on the bottom graph, it just shows you a line array from 2016 actuals to 2020 projected in each of these expenditure categories. Municipal court and personnel, you've got one full-time employee, and then you've got your contract judges and solicitor. Your operation and maintenance is obviously, is very small, but, you know, one of the reasons for the significant upticks to that budget each year is due to the reimbursement to the state or other governmental entities, and that is, as councils are aware, 60, approximately 60% of whatever the fine is levied by the court on a traffic ticket is remitted back to, back to the state. Administration, you can see small, we had a little uptick in 2019, and now we're coming back down just a little bit. Personnel makes up $632,389 of that. Your contracted and professional services, auditing, our paycheck services, things of that nature, at $58,500, and then your O&amp;M at $76,471. Development services, biggest reason for your uptick there, and, sorry, I should've stated this earlier, and I'll, you'll see it again in the budget notes here at the end, each of the personnel or salary and wages line items throughout all departments does not include a merit increase, but it does include a 2.44% cost of living adjustment, and that is the rate that the state sent us, as far as what the COLA is for this year. So you've got an uptick in, on the personnel side with that COLA, but then you've also got $15,000 in contracted professional services and $18,000, which will be the final payment on the comprehensive plan update. And that's, the personnel and the comp plan update is really where you see your biggest movement there from current year to, to proposed 2020 fiscal year. Public Works, portion of their salaries are shared with Stormwater, which we'll get to later on, but your personnel at $626,630, your O&amp;M at $260,800. The debt, very modest, at $7,111, and then your contracted and professional services at $57,000. So there's been, there has been an uptick, or an upward trend with Public Works, and that is just to keep up with the various projects that we have going on throughout the city, and to make sure that prompt and efficient services are delivered to our folks. Law enforcement, it, between it and the fire department makes up, you know, the good chunk of the total general fund budget, as is the case with, with most public safeties in most cities. But your personnel at $2343,692, that does include bringing on the four dispatchers during Q1 of calendar year 2020, or Q2 of our fiscal year. You can see the debt at $210,256. That also includes first bond payments coming in on, on the new police station. That is offset by impact fee revenue, so you actually don't have any current property tax dollars going towards the bond payment on PD or on the fire station. That's being offset by impact fees collected. And then, we've still gotta pay York County Dispatch for their services through the first part of the year until our dispatch goes live, and that's $85,400. That fee will, will go away in the, in the 2021 fiscal year. Fire services, you've got employees at 1.6, just over $1.6 million. Included in your capital are the air packs discussed by Chief Hasty during our, during our budget workshop with Council, as well as the repairs to the driveway at Station 2, and doing those things, and the, what do you call it, confined space entry equipment. So those, those are wrapped up into that, that capital number you see on the screen with your O&amp;M at $276,000, making up the balance of your, of your fire department budget. The big spike that you see in the historical line there in 2017, that was cash used in addition to the bond payments, for the, or in addition to the bond that was taken out for the new fire station, we used approximately $600,000 in cash to go towards those, those new expenses to build that and acquire the new fire truck engine, too. So that's why you see a big, a big jump in 2017, and kind of normalizes again in 2018. Parks and Recreation, modest upticks every year. A lot of that is really just due to the growth in the programs. We had approximately 3,500 kids, participants between spring and this current fall sign up, largest we've ever had. Your personnel, that consists of our Parks and Recreation Director, three programmers, and three maintenance guys to keep all that running, so they do an excellent job there. Your contract services at $60,000. We actually are anticipating now, working with the golf course, on bringing that number down as they took over our turf grass maintenance on the ball fields, which is good. So, always looking to try to find ways to save money and still deliver quality facilities. Your recreation programming expenses at $162,575, and then your regular park O&amp;M at $108,410. So, your non-departmental, your total bond payments equate to $1,024,588. Trash and recycle expense at $922,596. Your legal at $85,000. Other various expenses at $379,260. And included in that 2.5 million is a operational contingency and capital reserve of $166,165, provided the budgets all perform as anticipated, both on the revenue and expenditure side. Basically, we're projecting to be to the good by $166,165 at the conclusion of the fiscal year. And you can see the bond payments there at the bottom as they start to steadily increase a little bit. Budget notes for general fund, no millage increase, remaining at 89 mills, this would be the 10th year in a row. Only additional headcount, as I stated previously, are the four dispatchers in the police department, scheduled to begin in Q2 of the fiscal year, or Q1 of 2020. Includes only a COLA increase for staff, that's cost of living adjustment. We'll be acquiring three new patrol cars, we'll bring Council a resolution, probably November, December timeframe on that. It will not have a fiscal impact until 2021, so no fiscal impact for the coming year. Increase in trash and recycle collection fee, the budget includes that in there at $2.80 per house per month, $1.50 of that per month for trash, and $1.30 per month on recycle. Also, as stated earlier, repairs to the parking lot and driveway at Fire Station 2, purchase of replacement air packs for the fire department, and confined space entry that will also help serve our public works and utility employees, with the fire department getting that. Replacement of red tips in the median that are dying, interior remodel- Um, replacement of red tips in the median, uh, that are dying, um, interior remodel of the, uh, former police station to use as an operations center for Public Works and TCUD. Final bond payment on the, uh, bond for the greens, uh, for the greens replacement. So, um, for those that were around when, uh, late one August, eighteen greens all died at the same time, uh, finally getting that note paid off, uh, so that you get your final payment there and that's at fifty-one thousand five hundred?
Fifty-one thousand five hundred dollars, uh, the final payment for this year, um, or for this coming fiscal year.
And then as I, as I also, uh, stated previously, the bonds for the police department and fire department are being paid, uh, by the impact fees, um, that are coming in. So, um, offsetting those expenses. And that's it for the general fund. Do you want to take questions from, or comments from the audience now?
Sure, we'll start with the public comments. If anybody wants to make a comment about our, our, uh, budget, please step forward, state your name and address. We're glad to hear any budget questions you have. Don't all rush it at once. I know budget's a lot of fun. We sat in here, how many hours one night at, from seven o'clock to what, nine something?
It was late, yes.
Man. All right, no public comments. Any council comments?
Well, then I have a comment. Um, I'm really happy to see the impact fees are paying off. Uh, so we're getting the police department, the fire department paid off by growth, basically. So growth is finally paying for itself. Ryan and I beat our heads for how many years about that? And we passed the impact fee, so it's really finally paying off. Growth is paying for when people move in and because they're moving here, we need a new fire department. Our fire department is fine, the one we had, we need a new fire department. They pay for it, so that's great. Um, so we had, basically, I guess you would call it an income increase of seven point four percent.
Correct, yes.
We've had an expense increase of seven four point four percent.
Yes.
Every, every year we do the budget, it's, we're not, we're not, it seems like we're not getting anywhere. We just, if, if we get a rise of, I mean, we're not saving any money. We're not, are we putting any money towards the park we want to build someday?
Uh, I think you've got hospitality tax funds, you've got impact fee funds.
So that's an impact fee thing. You know, how many, how much money we got for, for that so far?
You've got in Parks and Recreation, just over three hundred thousand dollars collected in impact fees, uh, to go towards the top of park.
Better than nothing, but, you know, we got to figure out a way to buy this park. It's a very expensive endeavor and we need a park pretty badly. I think of anything we need now that we've got the fire, the police departments taken care of, and we got a new water tower going in.
Yes, sir.
Which is also paid by impact fees.
Correct.
Still, the, uh, park is a momentous major endeavor and, uh, I don't know, I just think we just need to put some money aside, away for that somehow. I mean, it's, I know every, every year it seems like we say, okay, guys, we got ten point eight million dollars to spend, how are we going to spend it? Where maybe we should say, okay, guys, we only have nine point eight million dollars to spend or, or ten million, you know, this other eight hundred thousand, we can say we put aside for savings account for a rainy day or for, uh, the park, for God's sakes. We can, you know, I think like, I don't know, if you can run a household that way, you, everything you, you get in, you spend. If you, if you, if your boss gives you a raise, you go out and, and spend it all, you know, it's nothing, you don't put anything away for a rainy day. Our government just seems like it's getting grow bigger and bigger and kind of out of control, quite frankly, uh. So I've been doing this now for four years and every year there's a raise. City Hall takes it, the next year there's a raise, City Hall takes it. So it's like, we're not getting anywhere. So that's my thoughts on it.
Anybody else have any comments?
Do we have any strategies there, Bob, that could be thrown into place as far as for specifics for what Dave's talking about versus just saying what we should do? Sponsors for Catawba Park, that's a start.
I'm sorry, what was that?
He said sponsors for Catawba Park.
Yeah, we get somebody else to pay for it, that's always a good thing. How's that working for us so far?
I've got some just general comments. Um, so, uh, Charlie, I know you and I have had some conversations about the budget, um, recently and, and in the past. And one thing that, you know, I shared a couple months ago was looking for more, um, detail in terms of, uh, seeing how we can align our budget with some of the standards that GFOA, um, requires and their budgeting process and, and documents and in terms of best practices in local government and making sure that we're being transparent and we're, um, being thorough and we're aligning our strategic plans and our budget together so we make sure that we're putting money in the areas that we need to be putting money into because that's where, where we want to go and that's the direction we want to be in. Um, so I know that just this past week, you spent, you had shared with me an updated version, um, of the budget that I'm still working through, um, some things I'm still not seeing in there. Um, I'd like to sit down and go talk, talk with you in more depth in terms of prior year actuals and, um, the, the last year approved budget based on not just total budget, but getting more specific on the personnel line items and operating and maintenance line items. But, um, more than happy to, to sit down and talk through that a little bit more. Um, I want to make sure that when we're approving the budget, it's very transparent in what we're approving and the things that we are getting as residents of, of the city for the money that we're approving. Um, right now, I don't think that, that level of transparency, I don't think we go down deep enough into that level, uh, to really understand what it means when we're approving this, these line items, um, in their, their generalities. And I would like an opportunity for us to be, um, providing that, that in more detail there. Also, one thing that I had requested in the past was that the budget document included the capital budget so that we could start taking a look at and planning for different large ticket items that we have year after year after year and understanding more about when those, um, those big ticket items would be paid for and in what year and how we were gonna, what the plan was for that. That was one thing I didn't, um, see in this year's budget and I didn't see it in, um, the version that you sent, uh, so we can certainly look more into that. And then lastly, I think that overall, um, we need to take a look at what our budget process is in general and how this council evaluates the budget and really talk through how we can, um, provide us more opportunity to provide input to the city manager ahead of being presented with a budget, um, and opportunity for city staff to brief us in terms of what are, what's happening within your organizations, within your department, where are the needs that you all see, um, and then have the budget presented to us when we, only after we have that opportunity for that two-way dialogue. That way, one, council gives an opportunity to provide staff with, here's the, here's some direction, here's some things that we would really like to see in this coming year's budget, and then also provides council with a heads up in terms of, here are the things that we need to make sure are included and you can probably anticipate council that will be requesting in this year's budget. Allowing us that opportunity to do more, um, to have those conversations, um, and then have the budget be developed and presented to us, and then having the, an opportunity for this council to come back and really talk through, what are the things that we, we really like? Do we really see, think and see that this budget, um, is bringing us in the right direction and that we will be able to meet our strategic goals or make improvements towards our strategic goals with this budget? And just, I think allowing us to have those conversations will be really helpful in the future. Um, so I, I would like to request that, that we do take a look at this process, um, more thoroughly and, and make sure that, um, we really are, you know, diving deep and making sure that it, it does provide us with everything that we need and what's expected from our residents.
Charlie, when do we do the, see, I'm sorry.
Sorry, so, and then I just had one question too. In terms of the, the vote tonight, um, Charlie, if there are changes still that city council wants to make to the budget, if we approve tonight's budget, um, but still have changes we'd like to recommend, how does that, how does that process weigh out over the next month? Can you help me understand that?
Well, I think, uh, first and foremost, it would depend on what, what those changes are. Um, you know, yeah, if it's, I want to see more money, uh, yeah, in public works, I want to see more money in street maintenance versus supplies. Well, that's, I mean, that could be done. I mean, that, yeah, it's staying within that department. But if it's, if it's making changes to department budgets, you know, taking one down and increasing another one, you'd have to do a new second read, or excuse me, a new first read. Um, and then would have to do, uh, and then do your second read. So if between tonight, you know, just use a hypothetical, it gets, it passes first read tonight and you get to September and council has decided that you wanted to make, um, what would be classified as significant changes, um, you have reductions and increases over various departments and budgets, uh, changes to fees, things of that nature, um, you'd have to go back to a new first read. Um, so that would require a, at some point, a special meeting for a second read, um, prior to October one.
Okay, thank you for.
Yep. Back, I was going to ask, we did the CIP two or three years ago?
Two years ago, yes, sir.
And, you know, maybe we need to brief an update or see if it's still as valid as it was back then. There might be some additions, deletions or changes or something.
The workshop that we did, um, a few months ago here, uh, had all this CIP stuff in it, uh, included in those, in those spreadsheets, yes.
So you consider it being updated right now?
Uh, yes, sir, we will update it annually for you, yes, sir.
We can get that online anytime we want. I'm sure I still have my copies.
Uh, the original is online, um, the CIP is online, uh, but we can definitely email you the, uh, the spreadsheets.
Yeah, changes.
That we brought together during the, uh, during the workshop.
Has there been any significant changes that you were aware, that you?
Um, I mean, we're checking things off the list.
Yeah.
For certain, but, I mean, there's, there will be things, um, as our, um, building inspection and permit fees continue, um, to either stay flat or go down, um, there are going to be capital improvements that are going to have to be pushed out or scrapped, um, without either an increase in the tax base or an increase in taxes or a reduction in other services. No doubt about it.
Got it. Anybody else have any more questions?
I, I guess I'll just add, um, in, in terms of Catawba Park and, um, how, you know, just knowing that this has been something that we've been trying to get for year after year after year, um, it still doesn't feel like, um, anywhere in the budget we're really making big strides to, to get there. Yes, we've got impact fees, but I just have, um, just some general concerns about how we are really going to get there, um, in, you know.
I can give you an update, uh, in like thirty seconds, it's the next thing on the list.
Right. Uh, but I'll just say, I'll say that, that's just a concern I have in terms of making sure that if we're committing something to the community that we really have, um, put together a, a good plan and we're making sure that we are making progress and following through on what we said or this council at some point said that they would do.
We're working on it.
So, and the trash recycle was, the expense was nine twenty-two, that's also what the income is from it, right?
Two dollars and eighty cents per house per month.
I'm sorry, nine hundred twenty-two thousand is what our expense is every year, but that's also.
It'll be, it, it's just, just under that is what our expense is to signature waste. Also included in that expense line item are, um, uh, expenses we have for our dumpsters, um, you know, that the city has at Public Works and things like that. Uh, but yeah, that, that is just a straight pass-through.
But the concern, I think, is with some people is we're making money off trash. So it's whatever the, whatever the trash expense is, is what it is.
Yes, sir.
It is not an income producer for the city of D U K.
That is correct.
Right, okay. And, and, um, let me ask about the, the fee increase.
Okay.
That's because of tipping fees that were being charged at York County.
Correct.
So when they, when they took the trash, they used to take it to Charlotte.
No, sir, the trash has always gone to York County.
It's always gone to York County.
To the York County landfill, yes, sir. The recyclers used to go to a MRF in, uh, to a facility in Charlotte.
Okay.
And now it's going to York County.
Was there tipping fees in Char- when they took it to Charlotte?
Yes, sir, uh, not, not originally. Uh, initially, there, there were no, uh, tipping fees at the, at the recycle center, uh, that they were going to. Um, I want to say probably two years ago, it went to twenty dollars, uh, a ton. Uh, the recycle, uh, the York County fee, uh, that would go into effect in October is thirty-five dollars per ton.
Okay, so for a while in York County, they weren't, we weren't, they weren't being charged a tipping fee.
As soon as, as soon as we started with York County, they had originally agreed to not charge us, uh, for the first year. They've now sent us a cancellation notice on that contract. Uh, it will expire the end of September. Um, you have an agenda item later on this evening, uh, to renew. If you do renew, it's at thirty-five dollars a ton. Uh, that is a new fee that they're, uh, that county council has adopted as of this year.
How is that different from the old fee when they paid in Charlotte?
It's fifteen dollars more per ton.
Fifteen dollars more per ton?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Otherwise, they wouldn't be able to raise, they can't just raise prices because of the contract, it has to be due to increases in their cost.
That is correct.
Like fuel.
Fuel and tipping fees specifically, yes, sir.
Right, okay. Are there any other questions before we move on? Anything else?
We've still got to hit the rest of the budgets.
Oh.
We've got to do utilities next.
More budget, let's go with it.
All right. So your utility department, uh, your water revenue, uh, sewer revenue and tap fees are your biggest, um, sources of income, uh, in our, uh, utility budget. Water revenue, uh, expected at, uh, two million two hundred thousand two hundred and eleven dollars. Sewer at two million four hundred five thousand eighty-five dollars. Uh, your tap fees at four hundred and forty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, and then other miscellaneous revenue, this activation fees, um, penalties, um, things like that, at a hundred and sixty-six thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars, giving you a total, uh, utility department budget of five million two hundred seventeen thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars. Um, as you can see from the, uh, from the line graph, uh, at the bottom of the screen, your water and sewer revenue stays pretty consistent, um, you know, coming from twenty sixteen and those are actual numbers in twenty, and sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, uh, our projected numbers in nineteen and twenty. Uh, your tap fees kind of up and down, it really, I mean, those kind of follow the number of new homes that are coming on each month, but that is a combined figure for domestic tap fees and our irrigation taps. Your new utility rates, uh, council has discussed in the budget workshop, um, this is not, this is slightly less than what your consultant, um, recommended is, uh, in, uh, we'll call it, uh, his unified option, um, that he presented, uh, at that workshop. Volumetric rate, uh, for TCUD One is at four ninety-five now, it will stay at four hundred, uh, four dollars and ninety-five cents per thousand gallons. Um, your base rate, uh, increases from seven seventy to eleven dollars and eighty-one cents. Your TCUD Two rate, that base rate stays the same at eleven eighty-one, um, with a volumetric rate of four dollars and ninety-five cents per thousand gallons. Um, TCUD Two on sewer going from top to bottom on the right-hand side of the screen, uh, your volumetric rate, uh, will go to six dollars and forty-seven cents per thousand with a base rate, uh, per month of sixteen dollars, uh, and the same on TCUD Two. So if you're a TCUD Two customer, uh, beginning in October, assuming the, uh, the passage of the budget, uh, you will have a volumetric rate on sewer. Um, and it is, it council's direction, it is a unified rate, so no matter where you live inside our city limits, um, you will pay the same rate, uh, for water and sewer as somebody living in another section of town. So our utility department expenses, your personnel at one million two hundred forty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. Um, your water and sewer, uh, you're coming in at nine hundred thirty thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars on water and six hundred twenty thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars on sewer. Um, all, the, the reason for the, your big difference there is, uh, the water is for all of our customers, um, so that would be all four thousand, some of our customers we have on, on the utility system. Keep in mind on sewer, that's the expense on going to Rock Hill. You've got, uh, seventeen hundred and fifty-two customers, uh, that go to our two treatment plants. So, um, your debt, uh, your, uh, debt service and, and your lease payments at one million two hundred seventy-six thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. That includes the acquisition loan, uh, bond for, uh, purchasing TCUD Two, uh, includes the S R F. Um, it also includes, uh, the upcoming, um, water tower bond, uh, for the new water tower. That portion is being set off, uh, as the mayor stated, by impact fees. Um, and then you've got, uh, some of the, uh, some equipment in there as well, uh, in the capital lease payments. Um, it has a, uh, operational contingency, um, of fifty-seven thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars, giving you a balanced, uh, a balanced budget for the utility department. Just a few budget notes, um, the budget does meet the mandated, uh, two point one to, uh, to one debt service coverage ratio. Water tower at the golf clubhouse right outside here, uh, will be repainted this spring. Um, the, uh, does include the purchase of an additional utility truck, um, which will be on a resolution coming to council later this fall. Um, that fiscal impact won't be until, uh, twenty twenty-one. Um, and as, as stated, uh, previously, the impact fee revenue, um, paying for the, uh, new water tower debt, so there will no, be no, no expense to the utility, uh, current utility customers. Uh, the rate adjustments, um, include, uh, unified rate system, TCUD Two customers on a volumetric sewer rate and the rates do cover the, uh, operation and maintenance and debt service of the system. And that's it for the utility budgets.
Any comments on the utility budget? Any comments on the utility budget? I didn't think so. All right, let's move on to the next.
Beach and Swim Center, yes, sir. As discussed with council during the budget workshop, and I'll show, I'll show here in just a minute the new Beach and Swim Center rates, but that budget's coming in at $169,187 with the vast majority of the revenue coming from our membership packages. As you can see from history, back in 2016, we were up in the 170,000 range. It has slowly dipped off. Now we're showing it, hopefully making a climb. The increase on your membership rates are to support the additional pool hours that the members have been requested through the summer based on the changes we made. So your family membership is going to cost 305, I think it was 290, 290 this year. So all of your rates are basically right in that $15 increase. That is to cover the additional expense on the more hours of operation that we would have. Outside of that, really no changes in the, in the Beach and Swim Center budget from this year to the next. Your personnel at $32,600, that is a portion of your Parks and Recreation staff salary, just a percentage there. O and M at $78,322, your management contract at $48,000, your, the debt payments that we've got are at $8,984. We've got just a couple more years of, of payment on that before that's gone. And then an operational contingency of $10,265. So you can see that after the decrease from 16 to 17, the expenses have basically become very stagnant or level, I should say, on Beach and Swim Center. Your budget notes for this budget, for this fund, slight increase in the memberships as stated to accommodate those additional pool hours. Just ballpark rough synopsis in a nutshell, whatever metaphor you want to use. The pool will remain open in the summer months until 8:00 PM seven days a week and will be open on weekends only in May and September, and it will be open beyond Labor Day. So that's what the members said that they wanted, and based on the survey we put out to the members, they said they'd be willing to pay more for it, so.
You say it won't be open after Labor Day?
It will be.
It will be open after Labor Day.
This year, this year we closed Labor Day weekend. The members have asked for a longer season and said they'd be willing to pay for it, so we're, we're offering it to them. Yes, sir.
So this is next year it'll be open?
This will be coming for the, for the coming fiscal year. Yes, sir.
Got you. Any comments on the pool and swim center? Okay, let's move on.
All right. Stormwater, these, these next ones, I'll try to be very, very brief as I can. Pretty easy on stormwater revenue.
This is the exciting stuff.
It always comes from the, too late.
No, I said, this is the exciting stuff, stormwater.
Your stormwater all comes from the ERUs that are collected, our equivalent residential units. $547,000, expected revenues coming in there. That comes in off of the tax rolls thanks to our intergovernmental agreement with York County. And you can see that that, that has continued to climb since 2016, but we are maintaining the rate. So the growth has just come in the number of customers. Your personnel, this makes up, your personnel expenses are 25% of what your public works salaries and benefits are because they're the ones that actually do this work as well. So personnel coming in at $270,467. Your operation and maintenance of our storm sewer system at $276,533. And your debt payments, and those are on capital lease, that is for equipment that has been acquired, at $86,786, giving you a balanced budget of $547,000. Nothing real significant in the way of changes over the last several years on our expense sides here with stormwater. So your budget notes, stormwater fee will remain at the $108 per ERU. Growth in this budget, as I stated, is coming from new homes and we've got some new businesses coming online. The commercial property in front of Walmart, we'll get, just get to pay stormwater this year. Got over $90,000 for maintenance and replacement, pipe replacement type projects for the coming fiscal year. And as I stated previously, your salaries in there, your personnel expenses make up, represent 25% of our public work salaries. And that's the stormwater budget.
All right, let's move on.
Okay. Events tourism, where all the fun, fun things happen. Your revenues are up on top, your community event vendors, your fall festival vendor fees, sponsorships, and transfer from hospitality tax, and that is just a balancing number based on the expenses. So you've got $125,323 in revenues there with $102,323 coming from a transfer from H-tax. Your personnel is $42,303, July 4th, remaining consistent at $30,000. Fall Festival at $12,500. Holiday Festival at 400. Concerts, and this is the only real increase you, you've got on, on the expense side, and that is to pay for the, a fifth concert every year. The one we did in April this year was actually paid for in last fiscal year. Obviously, it was very highly attended. So keeping that, that, that moving forward, you'll have five concerts again in 2020. Your holiday lighting, these are just lights in the median, lights around the, the front entrance and things like that, at $3,500. Senior games, $1,620, balancing that budget at $125,323. Our spike going through here on the events tourism.
Bob, what was the 2018?
16,000.
Oh, in projects, that's correct. In 2018, your, your anomaly there was just in some capital projects that were added on and completed here in Harbor Park and, and things of that nature, some tennis court resurfacing and, and the like. So that, that caused a jump there. Other than that, you can see our hospi-, our events tourism budget has been pretty even keel over the years with a slight uptick this year. Your budget notes includes a fifth concert, as I stated. Salaries in this budget are, represent a percentage of the staff who program and market the events as well as the public safety and maintenance staff that work the events. So we're able to offset those, some of those expenses through this, through this budget with funding from H-tax. As discussed at the budget workshop, we will be eliminating the Mayor's Cup Tournament beginning this spring as it just doesn't produce any revenue. It's pretty revenue neutral or actually finishes in the hole just a little bit. So taking that, we've, we've removed that prior conversation we have with council at the workshop. And that's the events tourism budget.
So the takeaway from this is there's no property tax being used for all these events.
That is correct.
It's all from H-tax, which comes from people going to restaurants and bars and things like that.
Correct.
Addition of 1%, they pay for that, right?
2%.
2%?
2%, yes, sir.
Okay, I don't see any public comments, so let's drive on to the next one.
I have a question. I know that during the budget workshop, one thing we had talked about in terms of that budget was the cost of a fireworks show.
Yes, ma'am.
And I had brought up the point of potentially looking into sponsorships. Did, was there any sort of?
We haven't found one yet, but it's absolutely something that we're going to, we're going to look into and see what we can do, most certainly. Yeah. We, we've got that note taken and we'll be working to do that. So if we are able to get a, you know, like a sponsor for the fireworks or something like that, then that would just be less H-tax money that would come in and would actually remain in the H-tax, in the H-tax budget if we're able to get that done.
So it'd be either able to go into reserves for H-tax or we'd be able to reallocate it towards something else?
That is correct. Yes, ma'am. So we'll work towards that end and see what we can come up with. Yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
Yep. Well, there we go. Hospitality tax, speaking of, $278,000 projected for the coming year. As the mayor stated, that comes from 2% tax that is applied towards the sale of prepared food and beverages. So if you go to the gas station and buy one of the gas station hot dogs, you're paying hospitality tax. You buy a bag of chips, you're not paying H-tax, you know, that kind of thing. So our biggest H-tax, H-tax provider right now is, and has been, Famous Toastery. The Shore Club is a close second, been doing very, very well. Believe it or not, Taco Bell's up there, always hanging in around there at third or fourth place. So the Nachos Bel Grande apparently is still hitting the spot for some folks.
Mostly sales after midnight.
And they stay open after midnight, so that definitely helps out. So you can see that there's been a modest increase dating back to 2016. Some of that, as I'll show in the budget notes here in just a second, because we've got, brought in some new businesses and some of it's just because of the success that our existing businesses have been having. So your expenses in this item, in this budget, you've got $9,000 in marketing, transfer to events tourism fund of $102,323, payment on the ball field lights at Rundy Park at $24,617, maintenance, repairs, remodeling type stuff here at the Glennon Center and clubhouse at $96,000. Visit York County, as we did this year, with $8,000. Remodeling the Pit Karen, Pit Karen Park Restrooms at $15,000, parking improvements at Windjammer $15,000, and then a modest operational contingency there of $8,060, rounding out a balanced budget of $278,000. The big jump in 2016 on expenses was, was that the Catawba Park transfer, Bob? Yeah. So council, prior council, I believe it was under Mayor, former Mayor Rundy, had used monies that were to be allocated towards Catawba Park from the Gardendale developer to do the large gathering room, kitchen and hearth room for the lower level as Glennon Center was being constructed. Some years later, council prior to this one, reallocated funds from our general fund reserves to replenish that. So that's where you see, you see these spikes happening here. So again, nothing too crazy in hospitality tax, but revenues in this budget continue to climb each year partly due to new businesses, as I stated. The park improvements, Windjammer and Pit Karen, Pit Karen Park, just remodeling those bathrooms, same as council did with Turner and Rundy this year. Hopefully, we get the, the DNR grant towards Windjammer, and this $15,000 would just be in addition to that. If we don't get it, then we're looking at possibly just paving a portion, you know, just continuing that asphalt out of the paved parking lot, just working our way up the rocks, the gravel lot as, as much as we can. Or we could use it as a, to do a paved trail from the, from the beach area up to the, up to the existing restroom pavilion. And again, it does include that continued partnership with, with Visit York County that markets our events and the upstairs facility in the Shore Club for us. And that's your H-tax budget.
Bob, how many more payments do we have on the Rundy field lights?
Five more.
Five more. Five more years.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Five more accounting this, this coming one. Yes, sir.
Any public comments on the H-tax? Okay, let's move on.
That's it.
That, that is.
All of the public hearing, yes, sir.
All right.
So it's back over to you.
All right. Good, good rundown, Charlie. Thank you. Now we can move on to, I think we were in the, did we do minutes?
Plan and Commission's back.
Mayor, if you could officially close the public hearing.
Do you have a recommendation?
Are we getting a recommend-, are you going to make a recommendation? No, 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 no.
It's later.
No, just, just.
Okay, the public hearing is closed.
There you go.
Now I can go to approval minutes. Thank you. City Council, you had to be able to look at the, at the minutes. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes? Hearing none, we'll call that, they stand as printed. Let's move to item five, committee reports. Teague Forever Foundation and Economic Development. Mayor Protem, Heather.
Okay, so for Teague A. K. Forever, this past meeting, we actually didn't have enough for a quorum, so we just held an informal meeting. In the last several weeks, we've had several meetings with corporate sponsors, including Comporium, Piedmont, and Charlotte Independence, all showed a, a good bit of interest in sponsoring with the park, and so we'll be following up with them in the next couple of weeks to kind of solidify that, that number. We did swear in a new member, Shannon Dunaf-, Dunaf-, say it for me.
Sharon Denofrio.
Denofrio. So welcome, Sharon. I know, I was going to butcher it. I'm sorry, Sharon. Our next meeting is scheduled for September 3rd at 7:00 PM, and I did want to just give a breakdown really quickly since Catawba Park is, continues to come up and it will come up in the economic development meeting notes as well. We currently have about a million set aside. Based on the impact fee studies, a little slightly less than 4 million, so for a total.
Right.
For a total of almost 5 million. The initial estimate was 15 million, but we're going to hopefully look at different contractors for a design build option, which could potentially bring that number down hopefully pretty significantly. So we're doing that right now. And so I think with the money that we have and hopefully with the corporate sponsorships and then some other community things, we, I think we're, we're going to get there. I think we'll get there actually pretty soon. So I'm not as concerned as I was in the past. Moving on to economic development. I wasn't at this meeting. This is when we held our special meeting for the water study. And so Tom was nice enough to put some notes together for me, so I'm literally just reading these notes since I wasn't in attendance. They're looking at developers, bringing developers into Teague A. K. and what our community wants specifically. So microbrewery, that mixed use development, they're looking at maps of what's available, both underdeveloped, undeveloped, and potential annexation. So basically all of our current land use that's, that's designated as commercial or retail that we can speak to developers to. And then Tom and Susan are going to work with the COG to give those maps to the Economic Development Committee. They asked each member to select their top five developers from a list, and they're going to put that together. Instead of having developers come to us, why don't we kind of give them what we're looking for and see if we can solicit them? Kind of a different, different approach, but that way we can look for what we want versus having somebody come in and just give it to us. They're also looking at Catawba Park funding and how to get major sponsorships. So, you know, obviously this is on the mind of everybody. They took a brief tour of the Glennon Center upstairs because some of the members hadn't been there, and that's pretty much it. Their next meeting is next Monday at 7 o'clock, so I'll be in meetings for the next two weeks.
All right. Thank you, Heather. Are there any questions from council?
I've, I've got some questions. Thank you, Mayor Protem, for covering Catawba Park, Park and the funding. So I guess in terms of what we're looking at, so a total budget or a total need of 15 million, we've got 1 million set aside, $4 million with impact fees, bring us to 5 million in the bank technically. But how does the, the $4 million that we're anticipating with impact fees, that, the collection of that is over a, is it a four-year period? How, how does that work?
The impact fees are just based on how long it takes to get to build out.
Okay, so.
So it could be three years, five years, seven years. Yep.
Okay, so would we be able to spend, like how would, how would that work if we haven't collected up on that?
Correct. So what, what I would envision council potentially entertaining or discussing is with the sponsorships, these corporate sponsorships, obviously, we're wanting them to spend big dollars as well. So let's say we're going after $5 million from, from a potential sponsor. They're less likely to write a single check for $5 million, but letting them, you know, through a contractual arrangement, spread those dollars out over X, X number of years. With those number of years being less than what the city would actually entertain as a revenue bond. So you could, the city council could actually entertain doing a revenue bond with the revenues coming from impact fees and from those sponsored dollars. It funds what you need on the front end, doesn't impact your 8% debt limit, allows you to go ahead and build the park, get it going, without taking on debt that's going to impact your property taxes and things of that nature as well.
And so what would the timeframe be if we were to go that route? Where we look, like when would we be able to?
Depending on the responses we get back from, from some of the folks that we've already talked to, I mean, if they, if we're getting, if we're underway with contractual documents with them this fall, I mean, it could be something that council considers in first quarter of 2020. I mean, realistically, yes, ma'am.
It's probably a couple-year build out, few-year build out.
Probably two. I would, I would say probably two to three.
Yeah.
You know, with it completely funded to develop the entire 62 acres with everything that's been on the site plan. Yes, ma'am.
Would that be what we would consider, all three phases? We were talking about phases.
Yeah, that would be the whole thing.
Yep.
Cool. That's exciting.
And if for some reason there was an economic downturn or something and these houses didn't get built or the growth has kind of slowed down, we'd be on the hook.
That is correct.
And potentially a property tax.
That is correct.
Yeah. So there are, there is some risk. Anytime you borrow money, there is some risk.
No doubt. Yes, sir.
So I'm sure, I'm sure our public will advise us what they want to do. When it comes to borrowing money, they always do. We look forward to hearing from you.
Do we still think that, so with the design build concept, how much of, of savings do we think that's going to create?
I mean, that's hard to say, and I don't think we want to make that assumption until we have some idea of funding that we're going to have. You know, it's kind of the cart before the horse. You know, if we can come down to a $12 million number, that significantly changes things. And so that's what we're hopeful for, but we can't put that out for bid until we have some, some money to back that up.
Cool. Thanks.
And the thinking is the money for the park, a lot of that's also, we've got GameOn involved with that, and we've got, we're kind of up in the air with GameOn right now. So how would that affect it? That's, that's significant. That's, that significantly affect the, what we anticipate, the four or five million dollars of impact fees?
No, the, the, the impact fee totals that, that we have been discussing have just been, uh, on the residential end, because there is no, um, impact fee for parks of recreation on the commercial end.
Oh, correct. And, and so approximately how many houses are still in the pipeline? We're talking about Windhaven and River Falls?
You've got 268 in Windhaven, 135 in River Falls, 45 in, uh, the courtyards, um, 190 and 20 points, 190.
So about a thousand?
Approximately a thousand houses.
About a thousand, give or take, yes, sir.
So, you're still approximately a thousand houses in the pipeline?
Yes, sir.
Right, and the new school, that's correct. The T K Middle School. All right, any other comments or questions?
Nope.
Okay, um, next on the agenda is Planning Commission with Alicia.
Yes, so our regular meeting, um, for August was canceled due to lack of new business, um, but we have a couple of things that are, we're being, we're planning for, for our next meeting. Um, we're recognizing one of our members who, um, has, is leaving, uh, the Planning Commission unfortunately, and we're also, at the same time, welcoming two new members, um, Nick Amico and Matt DeWitt to the Planning Board. Um, we are rescheduling our September meeting because we typically meet the first Monday of each month, and the first Monday of September is Labor Day, and so, uh, we're going to meet the following Monday, which I believe is September 9th, um, to avoid that Labor Day holiday, so, um, September 9th will be the day, uh, here in this room, 6:30 PM. Come join us for Planning Commission. That's it.
Any questions from council? All right, let's move on to item six, new business, 6A, uh, it's a Planning Commission recommendation for rezoning. Bring back Chris Leonard from the Planning Commission Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So the, uh, Planning Commission has voted to approve and rec- or recommend rezoning of tax map 646-0000-003 from RUD in the county to PDD as an amendment to the Windhaven PDD.
Got it. Thank you, Chris. And Charlie, just to be clear, that's just a street, right? It's not a, any more houses or?
That is correct, doesn't change any density, only, only thing that we'd be going through there is, is a connector road.
Is a connector road?
Yes, sir.
All right, okay, makes it a little more palatable. Okay, let's move to item 6B. Can I get my? There we go. All right, item number 6B is an introduction and first reading of an ordinance annexing TMS 646-00-00-003 and rezoning from RUD in the county to PDD in the city, and that's the Windhaven portion development. Are there any questions? All right, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance annexing TMS number 646-00-00-003 and rezoning from RUD in the county to PDD in the city.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Ryan Richard. Are there any questions from the public about what we're doing here? Okay, time for a vote, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? It's unanimous. Let's go to item 6C, right? Let me catch up on the computer here. All right, new business, item 6C is consideration of an intergovernmental agreement with York County for recycling services. In the spring of this year, we entered into agreement with the county that allowed our recyclable materials to be taken to their facility at no charge. The agreement stipulated that if, if they implemented a tipping fee, there would, they would then end that agreement and would seek to enter a new government agreement with the city. The county has sent us notification that they are terminating the existing agreement, and that termination will occur on October 3rd, 2019. We are going to continue to take recycled materials to their facility, uh, but they will start charging us a larger tipping fee, or tipping fee now, which is $35 a ton, which equates to approximately 30 cents per house per month. Is that correct? All right, are there any questions on this increase of 30 cents per house per month? Yes, sir, please step forth, tell us your name and your address.
Mr. Mayor, council, my name is Jim O'Connell, live at Ledstone Court. Um, question on this tipping fee, with the problem with the recycling, will that change it with these oops loads or bad loads?
I can cover that, uh, after having, uh, conversations with the provider, uh, they have agreed, we've not rolled this out yet, uh, but they have agreed to go to, uh, trash collection on Mondays and recycle collection on Tuesdays.
But that still may not resolve the issue.
It won't resolve all of it, but it'll definitely, uh, cut out any confusion as far as did they grab the trash can instead of the recycle can and things of that nature, it'll help unclog, uh, especially in traditional T K, help unclog some of those streets on collection day. Uh, we'll continue with our education plan and pushing it. Um, Mayor Protem and I have not had a chance to get together just to flesh out details on, uh, trying to kickstart that oops program, um, but hopefully we'll be able to do that here in the, uh, in the coming weeks and months, uh, to be able to get that, but it's gonna take everybody, no doubt. Um, per this agreement, the county can, after three, um, rejected loads, uh, within a six-month period, could kick us out.
Could kick us out or increase?
Uh, no, they'd kick us out, they would charge us for those, uh, loads.
Yes.
Uh, at the trash tipping fee, which is higher than the recycle.
Right.
Uh, and then they could stop accepting our materials.
Thank you very much for your time.
Sir, are you a recycler? Do you participate?
Sam.
Good. So how do we get people to educate it? I mean, there's just, it seems so obvious, some of the things they're doing.
Just saying aloud.
Okay. Well, we're doing everything we can and put it on social media, we, we mention it here all the time, we, uh.
We had spoken to him earlier, the last.
Exactly.
He rode behind roosters, not to throw anybody under the bus, but tires.
Yep, tires.
Cardo cake boxes.
Yeah. I, I'm at a loss sometimes of what else to do, and, and I see on our social media, we put pictures of what people are throwing away in their recycle, and it's unbelievable. I mean, we've got stickers on the top of the can that says what you can do, what you can't do, and, yeah, I just, I don't know, I don't, I think people are just, I don't know, I just, I can't, it's so easy to me, but I'm, I don't know, I'm as smart as some people, I guess.
Do we have more of the, the green recycling stickers to, to pass out? I know that, um, I'm, on my can, mine are already like, almost black and white and falling off and so.
We have some, yes, ma'am, at City Hall.
Perhaps.
And then you can pick them up at the front desk any time, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And then you can come in and pick up at the front desk.
Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 5:00, right?
Yes, sir. Okay, any other questions from council or the public? And so I will entertain a motion. You get the pleasure, it's the trash.
Motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with York County for recycling services.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem, do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Gus Machinus. Any final comments before we vote? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? It's unanimous. Six D is consideration of amendment, the agreement of the detention. Let me get on six D real fast.
Don't we do this one every year?
Yes.
Every year. And we don't use this too much, do we, Charlie?
Over the last two years, it's been used four times.
Right.
So it doesn't, it doesn't get used very often, no, sir.
Okay, this is our annual agreement, which provides for the secure detention services of the South Carolina Department of Juvenile Justice Detention Center for July 1, 2019 through June 20th, 2020. In the last two years, the city has only used this provision outlined with agreement to detain four juveniles. I think they were all Ryan's kids.
It was one kid four times.
Okay, I'm sorry.
There's a difference.
Yep. He's consistent. Any comments from the public? Any questions from the public or from council? It's pretty straightforward, we don't use it that much, but we have to put it in. All right, who gets the pleasure of doing this motion?
I'll go, it's my kid. Motion to approve memorandum of agreement for the detention of juveniles with the Department of Juvenile Justice.
I have a motion from Ryan Richard and son, do I have any, uh? A second?
Second.
Second by Alicia Dash. Final comments? Nope, I think it's pretty straightforward, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? It's unanimous. Let's go to 6E, there she blows right there. I'm surprised that we don't have to print this all out like we used to, it's all on a computer, saves all that paper for having to be recycled. Okay, 6E, new business, this is the introduction of a reading of an ordinance to provide for the budgets of the City of T K for the fiscal year commencing October 1st, 2019 and ending September 20th, 2020. This is the first reading of an ordinance necessary to set the budgets for the fiscal year, 2019-2020, that were presented by the city manager during the required public hearing at the start of the meeting. There is no millage increase, including in the coming fiscal year. For how many years in a row now? 10 years in a row. No millage increase, so you have, your taxes have been being raised by county and the school, of course, the school's the big hitter. Everybody recognizes the school, but they, you know, it's worth it. I mean, I think so, my kids aren't in school anymore, but, uh, schools have been one of the reasons we moved here. Great schools, best second or third in the, in the state usually, right? But that's not why we're here. All right, any questions, any comments on the budget before we vote on it? Well, I'll, I'll say something, my, my only concern is that we're, uh, we're not, we seem to be growing our government too much, we just grow, grow, grow. If we get a 7.4% increase, we get a 7.4, you know, expenses, and it's been like that all four years that I've been on council, I believe there might've been one year that we didn't, uh, put something back for something, but our city government is just growing leaps and bounds, and I know some of that's due to growth, and there's some things that just, you can't, you can't, can't change, you know, I guess the liability insurance or what's some of the other stuff we do.
You got your property insurance, your workers' comp, liability insurance.
I mean, stuff like that, that we have no control over, but that's still, that's not 10.8 million dollars, that's, that's significant, but it's not as much as we, as I think we, we could be saving, so, um, for that reason, that's just me, I'm not the emperor, I always say, I'm just the mayor, I'm not gonna support this budget, I think we can do better, we can save more money somewhere, I don't know where, I mean, that's what we pay you guys for, you guys had the retreat and went into it, but, uh, I just, I'm not comfortable with spending every dime we make every year, year after year after year. There's gotta be something that we can do to give back to me and everybody up here and our taxpayers, we need more amenities, we always talk about more recreational service, we had the big, when we first were elected, this council, we talked about recreation being important, we haven't done anything for trails, we haven't done any, you know, there's a lot of stuff that we can still do, and I just don't see that happening, and Charlie, we spoke in your office one time about kinda keeping the budget around 10 million dollars for expenses, and anything over that, we'd have available to do other things, and, uh, then the budget comes in, $800,000 over what I perceived that we agreed upon that time. So I just think, for that reason, and I'm just one vote, you know, like I always say, I'm not gonna support this budget, I think we can do better. Are there any other comments? Any other questions?
I guess a quick question.
Sure.
As far as for transfer of revenues, surplus to general fund or other funds over the last year, two years, do you have approximates?
Hundred thousand, give or take, yes, sir.
What'd you say, a thousand?
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand?
Yes, sir.
But this time are we, we're not, we're not transferring anything to reserves?
Don't, don't know at this point, no, sir. Uh, that, that's not done until October, yes, sir.
But nothing planned to, I mean, it's not in the budget to plan it.
Nothing planned because of the dip in revenues on building inspections, yes.
Mm-hmm.
I'll just comment that, um, at, at this point in time, I'm not comfortable enough with, um, approving the budget right now. I, I believe just based on two reads, we have a month to get there still, or I have a month to get there to work with you to make sure that everything in here is 100% what I agree to and want, um, from my, from my stance, and so I'd like to continue working with the manager over the next 30 days to make sure that it, it is, um, something that I can support, but right now, um, as I've stated, there's just a couple of things that I think we can work through to make sure that it's as transparent and, um, understand everything that's in there, um, so that's where I am right now.
And with that being said, as far as for efficiency purposes, whether we approve this first read and there's changes that are required for another first read and then a second with a special meeting, or we deny it and come back a month from now with another first read and another special meeting for a third read, so we're doing the same work, regardless of whether it's approved today or not.
Yeah.
Where if there isn't changes that are significant enough in time that allows you to get comfortable or dig into it or continue to do what we do as a council, then there is a potential that we could have a second read in a month from now without having to come for a special meeting.
Well, I didn't poll the, the council on the votes, I usually try to get a feel of what we're gonna vote before we come into these, but I didn't poll anybody, so I don't know what the vote is gonna be, so it could be, it could still pass, so I, you know, I literally don't know.
Couple, couple of quick notes, one is, um, I would ask council to be cautious because if you vote it down, um, that has ramifications on how soon it can come back, uh, and we have to have a budget by October 1st.
All right, how about we do this? I mean, unless you guys wanna take, I don't know how we're gonna vote, like I said, I didn't poll, and I usually do that, so it's my fault, I'm sorry about that. How about we table it for a date to be determined, so?
I don't think there's any reason.
Okay, unless, then I'm fine with voting, that's, all right.
I mean, I, I don't know, but.
I'm trying to think of, just in case.
Same work one way or the other.
Let me, let me ask a question, please, just to clarify something. Um, I, I know it's subjective to some degree, but you keep using the term significant changes. Um, I mean, if it passes as a first reading now and, um, any one of us chooses to dive deep into this and we want to make small changes, then we're on the path that we need to be on to have this budget done by October 1st. Um, if somebody wants to make a significant change, then we pretty much have to start over, is that right?
Another first read next month and a special meeting for a second.
If at that point there's council supportive, I mean, say, say you do a deeper dive and it's, it's not supported by council, well then you can carry on, it's just.
We could do a government shutdown.
You could do, you, you tap, technically probably have to tap into reserves, but.
Or we might find out we don't need a government.
Maybe.
Or we have, uh, certain people that we can't, they have to maintain, don't they do that? Certain people are considered.
Non-vital services.
Yeah, the non-vital would go away, but the vital people do.
Let's not do that.
Right, I know, but, so I'm willing to listen to anything that's, we can sit here and discuss, I'm, I'm not changing my vote, but it still might win, it sounds like it might be three to two, so it might be immaterial anyway, but so.
I just think it's all our responsibility as council members to do the research and dig deeper, this is something that we've been talking about for two months, so based on individual schedules and not being satisfied with digging into it deep enough, right now isn't the time to have that concern. That concern should've been handled over the last 30 to 60 days.
As I did.
While we're going through the budget process.
As I did.
Same here. And I believe that budget was presented to us on the first, by the way.
What do you guys wanna do? You wanna vote, table it, or just go for it, or what? Let's vote.
All right, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to provide for the budgets of the City of T K for fiscal year commencing October 1st, 2019 and ending September 30th, 2020, to provide for the receipt and expenditure of funds and other matters related hereto.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Gus Machinus. Are there any other comments from the public before we vote? Hearing none, time to vote, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of no, all opposed? No. No.
No.
Okay, it passes three to two. All right, let's go to item six, I'm sorry, that concludes our new business, we go to item seven, city manager report, Charlie Funderburke.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, I'll be brief, a recreation improvement project update, restrooms at Rundy, scheduled to be completed this week, a pergola will be installed in the coming weeks at the new bocce ball courts, I believe the, the benches are already out there, all other recreation projects, with the exception of the, the windjammer stuff, have been completed. U-sports are underway with participants, close to seventeen hundred this fall, by far the largest recreation totals we've had in a single year in our history. York County Chamber of Commerce is hosting their annual State of the Community Breakfast on August 27th at eight AM in the Glennon Center, Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Savage, Dr. Epps, and County Council Chairman Johnson will each be presenting during that breakfast. Immediately following the chamber, chambers breakfast, we will be holding the official ribbon cutting for the new police station at ten AM on August 27th, and elections, candidate filing for the November election will close on September the 6th, if you're wanting to put your name in the, on the list to, to run, it's a twenty-five dollar filing fee, and you do that over in York at the Election Commission Office. Last day to register to vote in person is October 4th, last day to register online at scvotes.org is October 6th, and the last day to register by mail is October 7th, it's gotta be postmarked by October 7th, and election day is November 5th, and that concludes my report for this evening, sir.
Thank you, and next we'll move to council comments, we'll start with Ryan Richard.
I'll be brief, congratulations to Officer Justin Spencer, great guy, not as good a softball player as he'd like to believe he is, he's subbed a time or two, make sure you guys relay that information, chief? No, he did great, um, great husband, great father, great police officer, the City of T K's, we're grateful to have him, and appreciate all you guys do, in blue, as mentioned earlier, but that's all I have, thanks for coming, guys.
Uh, no comments today.
Gus?
I'll be brief, too, I would also like to congratulate Justin and congratulate Chief for having him, that's, that's a, that's a great honor for our city. I'll try and find something to be excited about, I'm excited that, you know, we've got some money in the bank for Catawba Park, and it seems like there's a lot more promise than there has been, I know this has been in the works for a very, very long time, so thanks for everybody that's worked so hard for that, and I would also like to say that I'd have a hard time voting to spend money that we don't have, as much as I want to see Catawba Park going. It's kind of tough to think about spending projected revenues if they're not truly underway, because we have so many projects that are, have been underway for two and three years and really still aren't underway, but other than that, here again, very excited to know that there is some money in the bank, and, and it's looking like there's a, there's a future, and I'd love to see us break ground very soon.
Heather? All right. My only comments, again, thanks to Justin, if he sees this on TV later, thank you for all you do and all the police, a wonderful police department we have, without a doubt the best police department we have in York County, perhaps the tri-county area, they're very much appreciated. Can we make any announcement on all play together or an update, are we gonna wait for another month on that?
I think it's wait or it's vote.
Wait, oh, stay tuned, we've got some good news coming, but we can't divulge it yet, so we're working on it. With that, I will end council comments, and we get to move into an executive session to discuss contractual matters as it pertains to the Fort Mill School District. Do I have a motion and a second? Yes, we do, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.